Town room halls 133 at 7:00 PM. Everybody like to stand up and pledge allegiance to me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I'll have all the commission members introduce themselves, starting from my left.
Doniseo Fontana.
Anthony Papucci, Vice Chairman.
Kurt Timmerman, Chairman.
Matt Grimes, Secretary.
Sean Turner, regular member.
Greg Petroschioni, alternate.
All right, thank you. We will seat Greg Petroschioni tonight in lieu of Gwen Arment, who's not here. So, the review correspondence, I had Amy put on, this is the town of Southbury, they had some zoning changes. I think it's interesting reading for the sort of development, Laura, do you remember what they're called? Because I don't have the copy in front of me. They're planned development areas that they've created, and they've started them a long time ago. They're just changing some zoning things, but the biggest one as an example is Heritage Village. So, and then they go through a lot of information about what they want to change on it and just regulations, but the concept is interesting to see what is, you know, we, our, what we allow here in Brookfield is pretty straightforward and simple. Theirs are a little more, I guess I would say sophisticated or different from ours, so it's nice to see different choices, especially with what might be coming down the pike as far as middle housing and other things with the Public Act 25-49. So, some things to keep in mind when we think about if that is come law and is signed in, ways we can meet those requirements if necessary.
And it's very important because you remember the study that Mr. Dombowski came here and presented? Brookfield's population is not getting any younger, really. It's not. And Southbury has for a long time been number one town per capita in the state in terms of senior citizens. Brookfield has been in the top five, if not, it's in the top 10. So, and we've had, how long has, I think Newbury Village has now been here almost 20 years now.
Yep, yes, that's correct.
Right when you got on the ZB, I think that started.
And, and they do show other towns, and so there's a list of other towns that have similar developments like that. And the interesting thing is they do a demographic on age about the demographics of the, of the, of the, that development type versus, and they're usually up in their 70s, 60s, that sort of thing, versus the age of the town versus the state average age.
And they, they also started to get popular out in New London County when those two casinos got built.
Yeah. Driving's easier. All right, so, you know, if you have a chance, take a look at us up online on our, under our agenda.
Motion approved, regular minutes of 5:22, 25.
All right, I have the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Tony. There is a change I'd like to add on line 209, and this is about 31 Green Old Drive. I, I think we should add after testing analysis and, so it reads in the, in total, working on obtaining cost estimate with testing company for more in-depth testing, analysis, and conformance with deep regulations, because it is that analysis. We don't want to do more testing, we just want to know, have what the, better understand the analysis is. And speaking of that, oh, so, I'll get to that in a second. So, any other amendments? No? All right, all in favor of the amendments as amended?
All right.
All right, that's unanimous. Speaking of that, we did reach out to the testing, the company we hired in Viro. They came back with an unsatisfactory response, so we are asking more specific questions because they want to know, well, what do you want to know? So, the town attorney is being more specific as to what we want to know, which is, doesn't meet deep regulation, deep regulations based on these, these results and some of the definitions of what some of those things are. So, that's still ongoing.
Motion to add under item seven, discussion of House Bill 5002.
All right, and that's also known as Public Act 25-49. Do I have a second on that to Matt's motion?
Second.
All right, thank you, Greg. Any discussion on the motion?
Just to add it for discussion.
Yeah. All in favor?
All right.
All right, and by the way, speaking of that, there was a table of contents.
Thank you for sending that out. That was very helpful to kind of sort through, I guess, the important stuff as opposed to the rather mundane stuff.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll come to that because there's no continued public hearings, no public hearings, no old business. And so, we're on to 7A new business, discussion of Public Act 25-49, House Bill 5002, you said?
50, yeah, 5002.
Oh, 002.
It's now Public Act something though, because it's passed both houses.
So, it has not been signed yet.
Nope.
It's still been debated.
It has.
It's 91 pages long, it's got 42 sections, and I just want, I created a table of contents because reading that document and trying to sort which section relates to what section is a trauma. So, I do have, I do have a table of content in PDF that I can give to everybody so they can quickly click and zoom to the relevant sections they want to read.
That would be great.
Did the same thing that Amy sent out to us, or is that?
Oh, yeah, I guess so. Yeah, was that, yeah, was that the one with my table of contents?
Yeah.
The one I sent? Okay, so.
So, I guess there's several options on the table right now in terms of what could happen. Obviously, it could be signed the way it is and it would take effect. It could be vetoed.
Yep.
The governor could do nothing in which will veto itself by the 24th.
Yep.
Or there's, I guess, a fourth or, I guess, called a hybrid possibility of calling the legislature back into session.
Right.
It would be very unconventional to do that, but I guess it could technically happen. I would say probably my, my read of the overall bill and what I understand about it is probably 85% of it is not going to change a thing.
Yeah.
For any municipality in this state.
Yep.
I would say. I think that the problems that are causing concern is, and I don't like the term assault on local zoning, I don't like the term assault on local land use, I think what the problem is, is that there's not really a roadmap and everything. The idea is saying you're not going to punish towns, but I would say it away you are, because you're saying if you meet these quotas or something, you're going to get priority for state funding, and if you don't meet them, you're not going to get priority. That's not saying you're going to get it taken away from you, but.
Isn't that the carrot versus the stick?
Something like that, yeah.
So, so the sort of things that I think people are arguing about on both sides is the, my section two under shall not, because these stand out, shall not prohibit granny pots, should not establish minimum floor areas that are smaller than what the main area is, shall not place a cap on the number of units in the multifamily development. And, and there's more detail than that sometime, but these are just overall. We shall not require minimum parking on residential development, but there's, you know, stipulations in there. Shall not deny due to character of the town unless that character is expressly, expressly clearly articulated, like, you know, some meat behind, you can't just say it doesn't meet the. And section three, off-street parking, you can't, you can't require off-street parking, but again, there's some, it's for, I think, number 20, 24 units or less, something like that. And there's, let's see, another one. Where was that? Well, there's.
Funding, the funding preference for TOD, down at the bottom.
Yeah, so there's a new thing for TOD, Transit Oriented Development. And Transit Oriented Development could include.
Including the incentives here.
Both, yeah, bus, so they, what they tend to do is they do a definition of what they're talking about, and then after that, they start talking about, okay, if you meet this, this is what you get, if you don't meet this, this is what you don't get. And for the transit, that TOD could be a rail line, or it could be where a bus goes by. So, we could conceivably have our downtown as a TOD because we have regular bus service, I think it says daily, and I think our Harp bus goes daily. But again, those are the details that if you read into there what it means, then you can say, yeah, we, we could be, and you'd have to as a, as a commission say, okay, we're going to create then the zoning regs, this is a TOD. And so, then there's the incentives you get, and if you're not, if you don't have one, if you're next to one, there's incentives for that. And then the section 21 is actually a state agency to run herd over all these TODs. And see, let's see, oh, yeah, then section 24, ADU opt-out. So, that's kind of like what we had before, except section 25 says, except if you're in a TOD. So, this is where the, the, most of the opt-outs are gone. We had an opt-out for minimum floor area from the last one, and, and what was the other one, granny pots? So, we opted out of those before, but that doesn't exist anymore. And those are, now, let's see, I think those are the main ones I felt that people were, were, you know, had a difference in opinion.
And I thought the language on the TOD was not really clear in that it didn't seem to talk too far about, we talk about the expansion of rail that's happened in the last few years, and we've talked about like Metro North train coming through here and everything like that, and we've seen it happen out east and everything. Do you then suddenly become a TOD when maybe you were not before or something like that?
From what I saw, you had to say you are a TOD, but maybe it's a state designation.
But what if you're not today, but maybe you will be once rail expands into your area and then buses.
Well, I guess that's the question, is it states say you're a TOD, or do you say, I'm a TOD, I get the, I get the incentive?
I meet the criteria that the town, or the state has to count it now as a TOD.
Yeah, so I thought I read, but that, this is where we have to read specifically into these areas because it is so long. And I, I only created this so you don't waste your time and fall asleep on, on calculating what the affordable housing percentages are, or, you know, those, those are a lot of math in there, or what the federal laws are, respect to that, or elevator inspections, and, you know, things that, like you said, a lot of this stuff won't.
Change anything.
Won't change anything. It's kind of, you know, or hostile architecture, I mean, you know, hostile architecture is architecture designed to keep people from sleeping. No, that's a real term.
Oh, no.
Hostile architecture is architecture meant to dissuade people from laying down and sleeping on their, loitering, I would say.
The handrails that you put in the middle of a park bench so you can't sleep on it.
Right.
Exactly. That's, that's called hostile architecture.
Or the spikes on a brick wall.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of other things that I might call hostile architecture.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, when I was reading the character portion, I come back to something Tony said, I believe it was over the, might have been, I think it was, we were implementing the moratorium in the town center district. You know, people choose Brookfield for a reason, people choose Newtown for a reason, people choose Bethel for a reason, of where to live, because it has a character about it that they want to live in. And to me, it, it just, I don't know, I, I didn't like the way that section was worked.
Well, though, when I read that, it's like you can't just say character without backing it, backing it up.
Right.
You know, what do you mean by that? Well, you mean some architectural, like, it's got to be this sort of architectural thing, it can't be flat roofs.
Well, character is subject to interpretation.
Well, this is where you can't be, yeah, you can't make it subject to interpretation, it's like written out.
Unless you establish something beforehand.
Yeah, and we actually, yeah, we actually have, especially in our, our downtown TCD, we have an architectural design guide, and that, that is the character of it. So, we do have some things in some areas that definitely we could hang a hat on it.
The design guide is, is, you know, it's an image-based. You can, I think, as far as character, I mean, typical small New England character is not design-based necessarily, it's, you know, it's actual structure-based, you're not looking at, you know, 50-unit complex, you're looking at smaller.
Yeah, so we have to, we have to write that out.
So, if you, if you guide that out specifically, you can, should be able to limit a lot, but it has to, again, you have to be very specific and you have to have it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you.
You've got to have your hang.
Something like this, the, they're going to overrun whatever you want to do, so.
Right, exactly.
You have to very clearly classify it, not just as an aesthetic, what it has to look like, but as, you know, it has to meet small-town character, you can't have 1,000, you know, 1,000 units in this place or something like that, you have to define what that is.
You can't, you can't have a, a reed roof in a tiki hut as a house because that doesn't fit.
But again, that's the, that's the image-based.
Right.
We, I think as a town, if we want to keep the town the way it is, I think the town needs to establish a, a more of a town-based.
Yep.
Approach to it as far as keeping the small community where it's small units, it's, you know, small, small residential, it's, you know, you, you can't go, you know, just because it's on a corner lot in near downtown and, and, you know, oh, yeah, we're going to put a, you know, 15-family unit on it or something like that. I mean, granted, you'd have to get it through whatever zone it's in and stuff like that, you'd have to comply also, but I would imagine sounding like some of these things in this proposal, it will, you know, those things would get pushed through in favor of getting these developments in, so.
But it's also characters in the sense is also involving, for example, you have a POCD that comes up every 10 years.
Yes.
You make changes on it. You also update your zoning regulations from time to time as the times change.
Yep.
And as the needs of the community change, especially like, like, again, I refer to a lot of what Greg Dombowski talked about in his study, not just the POCD, but also the demographics of the community, the first response in the community. I think that that, the character is not, it may be a defined thing for a moment in time, but it's never not going to evolve and change.
Yeah, that's what the P, so the POCD should help define that, and the, and the zoning regulations help, you know, more detail, because you need that if you want to hang your hat on, oh, it doesn't fit the character, like, you know, we like gabled roofs with, you know, maybe dormers and stuff, that's sort of like a New England character, but that's got to be spelled out.
Right.
You can't just say, you know, and if we like farmland or something, you know, the, and, and this is where maybe the POCD in, in light of this have to look at, well, when you say character of this small town or suburban town, you better put more meat into that.
Exactly.
You know, and, and that's, so it's coming up for public hearing both at the, at the, when is that, on August or something?
August 12.
August 12, at the Planning Commission. So, that's the sort of feedback. Now, we can't go, we're not allowed to present in front of another, but, you know, other people should go to present this sort of thing.
It also, according to the table of contents here, thank you, does not really provide for a cause of denial due to lack of, like you brought up before, emergency services with that.
Oh.
You know, if we're going to overrun, you know, and, and, you know, cause too much strain because we don't have the personnel, we don't have the ability to provide what some new development is going to potentially require.
Yep.
I don't, I don't see in here a really, a strong, you can, you can deny based on, you know, supported by evidence, but there's, you have to be very, you know, you have to have all of those ducks right in a row to be able to do that, so.
And that's why that six-story thing didn't go through for the safety aspect.
Yep.
We don't have equipment.
Yep.
We can't be, we can't be expected to get equipment to service a six-story thing.
Right.
What they say, and this is where I, I think I read in the paper about lawsuits and, you know, you have to pay for 830Gs applicants, but only if you just have no evidence to support your denial. So.
Point being is, I think, as a town, we should figure out and put these things together so we have them ahead of time.
Yes.
We would say, yes, this, we've looked into this, we've done this study, we're not able to.
That's not a bad idea, to, you know, we already know what we can handle, so.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, I had the, I had the occasion to, last Friday, I was at the Connecticut Association of Municipal Attorneys luncheon, and the policy director of CCM was one of the keynote speakers that, that day. And he went through, CCM, which is nonpartisan, it involves all 169 municipalities, they take it a very, very hard stance against this. Over 80% of the chief executives who have weighed in, whether it's mayors or first elect or town managers, have stated opposition to this because, and I think the main part of it is some of the areas you mentioned, but also it's taking this one-size-doesn't-fit-all approach. And I think that that's the problem with this legislation, and I don't, and if you look at what's on the table today, I mean, I listened to what he, he said, and the other, and right about a week or so before that, before the legislature adjourned, I had the occasion to speak with one of the state senators, and he had said to me, this was about four days before the legislative session end, I don't think the Senate's going to take this up, I think it's going to die a natural death because there's too many other things on the plate, including the budget, and we're shocked when it actually got a vote in the Senate. So, you look at what's on the table today, and in zoning, we always say we can approve as submitted, we can deny, or we can approve with stipulations. I, I'm not convinced that legislatures called back into session in a 24 or 48-hour period, they're going to be able to work this out, but, but I, I can't see how this is going to be a good thing as submitted, and I would hope that we as a commission, just given the efforts that we've tried to make as a commission in terms of housing moratoriums, in terms of the regulations that we've approved, in terms of watching our regulations evolve, in terms of preparing for the community, I would hope we as a commission take the position that this bill, this bill ought to die. I, I mean, I, I don't see how this is going to benefit us. As submitted, no. If the bill had the 85% of it that doesn't mean anything, I could maybe see it, but the way it is now today, I, I don't see how this is going to be good for not just us, but many municipalities, in fact, all of our surrounding municipalities. Get off the soapbox here, sorry.
I think you hit the key piece. The legislation's written for everybody, there is not a one box fits all. There are large towns that could benefit from this, Hartford, Danbury, whatever, Bridgeport. The small towns, our town, Newtown.
Which is going to hurt.
You know, New Fairfield, go out farther east, they don't have the same components.
And I don't see how some of those towns are ever going to meet the quotas.
No, no, but, but that's my point.
Yeah.
So, again, you're, again, how do you fight David and Goliath? You, you can't. So, look, I, I agree, but I think that this is a challenge, and I think it's a serious challenge, but.
I agree, we should, I, I think we should oppose however we can. My statements are only regarding, you know, the assumption that this does get jammed down our throats.
Right.
So, and be prepared for that, but I think for our town is trying to keep it the way it is as best we can.
And local control.
Well, that too, absolutely, yeah. That, it's, for, you know, absolute foremost, we, I think as a board, we should be, we should not be in any form of support of it whatsoever.
Well, has everybody read everything? Because I, I am not willing, I am not willing to, to myself have a position on it until I read through the details of.
I haven't read everything.
I've read basic pieces of it, I haven't, but again.
Three sections.
Even at a high level, if, if 80%, 90%, 99%.
See, that's, that's the part I don't know yet.
No, no, but, but this still falls, it seems to be one, it's, it's good for everyone, or it's supposed to fit everyone, and you cannot put Hartford up against Brookfield. The demographics are different.
Or Southbury, or, or Middlebury.
Whatever, it doesn't matter. Again, it's, it's large town, small town, they're all being the same way.
No, I, I understand that. I guess I have to wonder if we have a shortage of housing, and I, and I'm, I don't think it's 100,000 or something, but there is a shortage. So far, that has not gone away.
Right.
So, and so far, none of the towns have addressed our, any shortage of housing, we have. I think we have, you know, enough, you have a bunch of apartments going, but not everybody has, so it still exists.
Right.
And we have more redevelopment, too.
The time for the legislature.
But when, when does that, when does that actually get solved? If, if the towns haven't solved it themselves, should the state step in and say, listen, you know, you, you towns aren't doing it?
The time to have a discussion on the 85% that was mundane would probably be next year or it was last year. This is not a good bill to have discussion about during the budget session, because it's not tied to the fiscal health of the state. So, it should come up in the, in the even year when they're, when they're in an entirely lawmaking session, and have more public hearings, and speak to zoning enforcement officers.
Which it has.
It really, not, not at the level that it should have. I mean, they didn't even think it would get a vote in the Senate four days out.
So, this is, last year's didn't go through, this is this year's.
It, it didn't even really, it didn't, it didn't even get out of committee last year.
Yeah, and so, this is what they did to, you know, try to, okay, let's, let's change it, let's, whatever they call compromise, compromise, and this is the one that made it through.
Like I said, I haven't read the whole thing yet, but from what I've read, it looks like, or it seems like towns are losing control.
Yeah, and, yeah, sure.
But do we want to do that?
I don't know, because so far, the towns haven't done what they need to do to solve the problem yet.
But that's not our responsibility as.
But it is our responsibility.
Controlling, not as controlling what the town does, it's, I mean, it's, yes, because if we take, if, if we allow this bill and this takes us away from us, and we're dictated as to what needs to be done, then why are we here?
Then why don't we, why haven't we done anything ourselves? I mean.
We have.
In the big, in the big thing, we have in Brookfield.
There's, there are a lot of developments that have been, been put through.
Yes, but what about the rest of the towns?
You have a statutory scheme right now.
But that's not, the rest of the towns aren't our responsibility, Brookfield is.
No, but, but the state has looked at it and said, listen, there's still a problem.
I, I get that, I understand that, but again, we are Brookfield.
They don't have a state statutory scheme right now that has a lot of state control over zoning. It doesn't. The statutes just are not written that way. The statutes are written to give the municipalities a lot of flexibility and a lot of leeway as to what they can do, can and cannot do, and I, and, and that's what needs to be preserved, because as Tony's saying, Brookfield is not East Hartford, East Hartford is not Middlebury, Middlebury is not Watertown, I mean, and that's why, to me, the way, like, if I'm approaching this, about, this to me is a zoning application, and my choice is to approve as submitted, I could never approve it as submitted, regardless of what the mundane parts of it may be, and therefore, I, I mean, this is another approach where I say, what can we do here? And what we can do is go on record as a commission and write to the governor's office and ask him to veto the bill. So, I put this on, I asked for this on the agenda for a reason.
Yeah, so I understand that, but if you haven't read the detail of these sections, this is just an overview. There's a lot of detail and, you know.
There's nothing in there that says we shouldn't be part of this.
The controversial parts are thresholds that preclude the rest of the bill from.
No, people, they, I, I'm not going to take your word for it, I'm going to read it myself.
Then read it, I don't care.
Nobody's saying not to read it.
And so, that's why I am, no, I know, that's why I'm not willing to make a stand myself, personally.
I am.
If the rest of you want to, you know, vote on a motion to whether the commission as a whole, or the commission for the people want to vote for it, have a position to oppose.
Well, what is, our next meeting is in two weeks, right?
It's the day, it's the day that this thing has to be signed or vetoed.
Okay.
Danny, you haven't said anything about this, what's your opinion?
It's that surgery, that's why.
Oh, sorry.
I'm trying to take it all in, and I think I would have to talk, but you made some good points, also, you made some good points. So, but it's in two weeks, so it's a tough place to.
Well, they have put us in a tough position.
It's a very tough place right now. Could we have a special meeting or council in a week and look at it then, or is that too late, too?
Well, I, I don't think the legislature's going to get called into session. If it does, I can't imagine them being able to, those sessions are 24 or 48 hours. I, as I said, the, to me, the, these parts of the bill, and I have read these parts of the bill, create a threshold that preclude this commission from responsibly supporting this bill. So, I am going to make a motion to express the sense of the zoning commission to contact the governor's office and urge the veto of HB 5002.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Greg. Any discussion on the motion?
Again, this is, this is what we can do.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I wish there was more time to have a more thorough discussion about it. I wish the legislature had spent more time on it. If they had, maybe this wouldn't happen.
And it might be a moot point anyway, because the governor might say, I'm not signing.
The governor might do nothing, the governor might do nothing.
Hopefully, it's a moot point.
Yeah.
But I think as it is now, with the idea that this could be signed tomorrow, I think that we have to take this position for the good of the community.
For the good of Brookfield, I think, I agree.[1764.65]
So, all in favor? All opposed?
I.
All abstentions? Abstained. So, two, four, three abstentions?
Passes. Passes without negative votes?
For procedurally, I just have a question. Who is going to be drafting the letter?
Well, Matt.
I tell you, he's not gonna draft the letter.
I'm, I'm happy to do it. I, look, I mean, I, I would probably go along the lines of what I've seen other commissions and other chief executives submit.
Or one sixty-nine strong is put out.
Uh, I don't know what they, I haven't read their, their particular position on this. No, I, I mean, I.
What's the formula?
Most of what I have seen has come out of CCM or out of CAMH. So, and I think Lisa's probably seen a lot of what's come out of CCM too.
Well, I prefer if you wrote, I wrote what you said.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I prefer you write based on your experience.
Okay. And again, it's not, it's not, to me, this is not a.
Based on your input.
To me, this is not an R versus D issue either. To me, to me, this is very important. And, and, you know, this is one thing, and I was saying before the meeting, I'll say it on record now. You know, it's too bad they can't use a line item on non-appropriation bills because if you could line item veto parts of this, it might be okay. But you can't line item veto something like this because it's not tied to money.
Yeah.
So, and, and I think that that's why maybe the governor's talking about sort of having the, the special session to do that. But, you know, as I said, as of today, when you look at what's in front of you and if you're, you gotta sign it or veto it, I say signing it is not gonna be good for not just us, but for many municipalities and most of the states. Okay.
So, again, I'm gonna hound a little bit on, on how we're gonna go about sending this because I know time is of the essence here. Is the.
I will, I will, I'll, I can make a draft. And if you want final sale of the draft, even though you abstained, I mean, I've got no problem with that. You're the, you're the chair of the commission.
Sure.
And then you'll sign it and then we'll send it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure then.
Yeah. All right.
Thank, this was a good discussion though nonetheless. And you know what? I, I do encourage everybody, go read the parts of it. And especially if there, maybe two weeks from now, there'll be a special session called and we'll be able to weigh in maybe a little more thoroughly than we just did. I don't know.
Because I'm sure they'll talk about, if they have that session, about the parts we're talking about here, or that I have outlined here.
They're hot topic parts for, for everybody. So, yeah, I mean, I, I would imagine that would be the focus of all of it.
If anyone's interested, the governor's leaving the country for six days. Maybe he'll stay a little longer in the.
Yeah. Maybe. All right.
It'll be moot.
We have no tabled items. Nine commissioner comments in a formal discussion. One of the things, there was a couple of things. I was looking in, last, last meeting, we had Mr. Etif Savar come in about having a food truck over by the landing or in the landing parking lot. And I looked at, you know, we had, we allow that sort of thing, you know, with a plan of safety for parking and.
Isn't the landing, isn't the landing eighteen old Route seven? It's not.
I know. We went through this before. It's the same era.
We went through this. Yes.
And there's nothing specifically preventing it in the TCD. I think when Twins Barbecue came in, it was for something slightly different. So.
Well, they have a permanent structure now too, right?
Well, that's a commercial kitchen, but, but they don't serve out of there and they're not allowed to serve out of there. They have to serve out of their truck.
But it's not an apples-to-apples comparison.
This would be an apples-to-apples because they would cook in that commercial kitchen next door or, and then serve out of their truck. Or, you know, cook in their truck and serve out of their truck.
Right.
But what they wouldn't, and they would give it to people and they would, or they might sit down.
Nobody's sitting that, on picnic tables.
They might have a picnic table, but they're not, there's no, you know, permanent structure for sitting down.
I'm sorry.
We've always wanted to have a site plan. Where are you gonna put it? Where's the, how much parking? Do you have the, do you have the authority of the, the property owner to do that? The other thing was, and, and this was, the kitchen next door doesn't allow frying there because of health, health rules. You can't have a fryer in there. So, if he's planning on frying, if he wanted to use that kitchen as a commercial kitchen, you can't do that. So, yeah.
That's out anyway.
On a, on a related note, kind of, the owner of that was talking about converting to residential because for the same reason, I can't use that commercial kitchen. Nobody wants to stay there. And I said, well, why don't you see what happens with Public Act twenty-five forty-nine? Because right now, you wouldn't be allowed to do that in the TCD. You could do it in C one or C two, but not there. So, you would have to come in front of us with a plan just like that. And I think there was another one, just someone else had that same question. I'm trying to remember where it was, but same, same things. Yeah, I forgot where it was, but same thing applies, you know. In the commercial zone, you have to have a plan. Where's the truck and the park, everything. So, that's, and then we'll prove it for a year or something like that. And then the last thing is in the middle, the one thirteen Whiskinier Road, the complaint from one se, about one seventeen Whiskinier Road.
Again?
That's Route twenty-five. I don't know if you've ever been down there, but it's, it's a contractor's yard. And, and that was a pre-existing non-conforming use many years ago. And there was actually a Z B A about it and, and talk about abandoning their, their use. And then there was a lawsuit. The judge said, no, they didn't abandon. You can't, you know, even though we supposedly have letters and everything. But in the end, they have that use. To further add information there, the town attorney at the time opined that landscaping, a landscaping business is also a, is allowed use as construction. But they can only, they can't do any repair there. They can't do any construction or anything. They store their equipment and that's it. That's all a contractor's yard is. So, this, if you've read the complaint, you know, that came in, they were doing some things such as, there was a towing service. So, I don't think that's happening anymore.
That is, is supposed to.
Been, yeah, that's not allowed. So, the only thing allowed there are those two things. I mean, those one thing, storage of contractor's equipment and nothing else. They were doing woodcutting, I mean gigantic logs and selling wire, firewood. This is two thousand nine or something. So, you can't sell anything either. It's just storage. So, so that, that's, that's what's allowed. So, if there's any, any other thing going on, then the Z E O will go there, issue a cease, you know, notice of violation and go up through the different steps there.
I'm sorry, this is the yard on that curve?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yeah. So, that's what that.
Were they saying that there was a period where it was not operated as a contractor's yard?
Well, back in two thousand nine, when it come in front of the Z B A, they were trying to claim that we could still do woodcutting. And, and then they had abandoned, they said they were gonna abandon certain things, other things they were doing. And they had written down that. But the judge decided, no, that's not good enough. And speaking of that, in this Public Act twenty-four, that's twenty-five, that's forty-nine, there was some words about, you know, and I, I don't know exactly where it was. I, I don't think I put it out here, but I did read it about how abandonment had to come about. It can't just be because they didn't use it for a year or something like that.
Yeah, specific guidelines.
Yeah.
Adverse possession or something like that. I don't know.
No, it's just, just like, you can't, we can't say you abandoned because you haven't been doing it.
Is there, is there, for lack of a better term, a statute of limitations with respect to abandonment?
No.
No.
Non-use is not a valid reason to abandon it. They have to explicitly abandon the use and it pretty much has to be done in writing.
Yeah.
It can be destroyed. They can still build a patch.
It doesn't matter if the property, it doesn't matter if the property changes hands, right?
Yes, it could be completely destroyed.
It does not matter if all the uses are tied to the property, not the property owner. And that's true for all zoning permits. So.
Yeah.
For uses.
So, any other comments or?
So, abandoning, the abandoning of business is not the same as abandoning a use.
That's correct. Yeah.
Correct.
Still have to pay your old liens and everything if you abandon.
Well, that always has to happen. Can't take it with you.
Um, any other comments in formal discussion? Do you have anything, Laura?
One thing I just would like to bring up in the Public Act that I didn't hear anyone bring up. I don't know if anyone, since this is going to be a combined planning and zoning commission, pay attention to the Affordable Housing Plan and the Priority Affordable Housing Plan?
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
The Priority Affordable Housing Plan is a brand new.
Priority housing, you mean? Priority housing?
Section thirty-nine. Section thirty-nine.
Did I say it wrong?
He said Priority Affordable Housing.
I'm combining the two. You knew what I meant. Yes. Because it's a brand new plan that will be the responsibility of this combined commission to, to come up with in addition to our Affordable Housing Plan. To also, in addition to the Plan of Conservation Health that we're doing.
Yeah. So, section thirty-seven through thirty-nine.
And I, and I did, I didn't use the term. I didn't want to because this was not tied to an appropriation. But in a way, this is an unfunded mandate because it puts a strain on the land use office that it's not like they've got tons of time on their hands to be dealing with this.
Oh, there, there's, there was another thing. Was it rental assistance?
There is rental assistance.
It's now, if you are over fifteen thousand, you have to, was that the Priority Housing Plan or was there something else that went from twenty-five thousand down to fifteen thousand? And so.
What are you grandfathering in if you?
No, I don't.
I'll have, I'll have to go through it with a five-tooth comb to get to the, the details on it, but just overall and vague, I just want to put it in your heads that there is a brand new plan out there that is going to be the responsibility of, of my commission.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, off-street parking, that was the other thing. Off-street parking, you know, like that one. They said, oh, you can't, you can't create a requirement for a minimum requirement, un, you know, but they have to prove they have enough parking to satisfy.
They'll have to do, yes, a parking study.
Yeah, they have to do a parking study. So, yeah, you might have a plan, you might have an agreement somewhere else, but they also talked about public parking. I'm like, how can you use public parking to satisfy your private, you know, requirement? That doesn't seem fair, you know.
This was a, it's a very, very large bill that, you know, not a lot of people got their hands on before it got released.
Yeah.
And they said, when I talked to one of the senators, he said, I didn't even think it was gonna come up for a vote. But they.
Surprise, surprise, surprise.
Any luck?
I don't think the governor thought it was gonna come up for a vote either.
All right. Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Tony. Any discussion on adjourn? All in favor?